stupid shirt on stage, people come up and they talk about first Ave. They talk about Acme, they talk about Caboose, they used to talk about Nye's. That is what we are known for, our character. Now, I have been a part of the North Loop for the last 12 years. And just like everyone else, or most everyone else, I am excited about it being the fastest growing community in our city. I think it's amazing. I think that's a great thing. I have brothers and nephews who live there, some of them who live in your guys' buildings, the Sole Tava, or however that is pronounced, it's a real Fav situation, but Saltavah? Nailed it. They, they live there, and the reason people come there are these attractions, okay? It's the Acme, it's Gunsbury, and you guys, you list them on your website, right? As the reason people should come in. You know, the, the Spoon and Spine, the Loop, Acme, all these things there, that's the reason people come. So it's exhilarating that we want to bring more people to the area. But there's this joke that's become kind of famous in Minneapolis in the, in the last few years, and it's a person will tell another person about a favorite business that is closing. Hey, man, did you hear El Chipo Records is closing? And then the other person will say, oh, what, are they putting up more luxury apartments? And then everybody laughs, not like you guys, but you know, when it gets said near one of those businesses. And the reason they laugh is because the number one rule of comedy is truth. Now, I'm not saying that's, that's all true. I'm not saying luxury apartments are destroying the community. What I'm saying is there's a grain of truth in that. No one here is against the development, or development in general. No one here is against bringing density to this community, like a number of people have said. All we are asking here today is that it's done with the care, the commitment, and the attention to detail that a city that is known nationally for its arts and its character deserves. That's what this city deserves. Now, if you take the time, you explore the options, and you find that right where we're at right now is right where we should stay, well then, that's the way it is. But take the time, take the consideration, pay attention to detail, and make sure we stay that city. That's what we are asking today, because people will leave. It won't happen immediately, but people's businesses will be hurt with parking, the word I wasn't supposed to mention, and it will slowly have people leave. And then all these people who are moving in, yes, we will have more incomes there, and you will have a nice walkable neighborhood that nobody has anything to walk to. And then we will also have lost the thousands of people who travel in to these numerous businesses. So in conclusion, in my overly long-winded ramble, we're asking you politely and compassionately today to deny these variances and delay the development until a solution is reached, not just for the businesses, or the current residents, or the future residents, but for all of them. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Okay, next speaker. Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, okay, all right. My name is Dana Suggal-Ali. I live at 8241 Henslow Avenue in Cottage Grove. I have been a resident of the Twin Cities forever. And I grew up, I grew up in the suburbs, and I used to live in downtown Minneapolis. And one of the reasons why I moved out of living in downtown Minneapolis, even though I work in downtown Minneapolis, is that I couldn't park. And then at the same time, I couldn't have guests who came and visit to park, and it was a total nightmare. And yeah, I'm all for getting rid of the parking lots. I'm, I'm totally okay with that. But as, as a person who, uh, who, who wants to find, uh, compromises in things, I think it's important that we need to acknowledge that we do, we are a city where people commute from outside in, and one of those things is definitely for our theater districts and for our shows and for our theaters. Um, I'm also a comedian, and I've been dreaming about performing at Acme ever since I could actually find the courage to go on stage. And, um, and, uh, sorry, I'm so nervous. But, um, I, I really, uh, I really get sad when I think about, um, it going away, because it's such an important place to me, where I found my voice and I found a sense of community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Those are tough acts to follow. My name's Matt Janson, I live at 708 North First Street. And there's a couple of misnomers that I'd like to clear up, um, that were presented from Solom. One is, there's this talk of 70 parking spaces at the new development that are reserved for commercial. Okay, so the building in question, there's two commercial tenants, which are not being allowed to renew their lease by the end of the year. Okay, so these 70 commercial spaces are really, uh, being reserved for when this building gets flipped into more apartments. Okay, so I just want to make, call that out. The second thing is, there was an assertion made that the North Loop Neighborhood Association had unanimous approval for this development. Well, it's on record, you can go to the North Loop Neighborhood Association website and see that they actually approved a four-story building out of seven, nor did they approve any variances that are being discussed today. So, we're talking about two different projects, apparently. The next point I'd like to make is, um, the assertion that Solom has long-term alignment with city planning and development. And this is true, because the 602 Nolo flats that exist on North First Street, they're ready to open soon, uh, they took advantage of the transit incentive whereby their parking is, the, the minimum requirement for parking is cut in half. And that's because it exists within a half mile of the light rail transit. We all, we're all aware of that. So I just find it interesting that if, if Solom is truly aligned, why aren't they pursuing this transit credit for this new development? It's half a mile away from light rail transit, but again, it goes back to, um, creating parking for future development that has, has yet to happen. Just to give you an idea, I know we've talked about parking a lot today, but just to put the finer point on it, right now, in the Itasca Building, uh, for one parking space of covered underground garage, $40,000. Okay, so if that doesn't tell you that there's a demand for parking in the North Loop, I don't know what does. That's a separate mortgage. So for us to try to, as a building, come up with a parking solution, uh, for ourselves, private parking, we have to come up with $40,000 each to build a ramp, okay? So, um, I guess what we're asking for today, um, there's a lot of common themes that have been presented, and a lot of it has to do with the city's level of preparedness for the rapid development that's happening in this city. And right now, I think it's becoming clear that the city's not ready, or they, it's hard for the city to keep pace, infrastructure-wise, with the rapid pace of development. And when I speak about infrastructure, I'm talking about parking ramps to replace lost parking, I'm also talking about pedestrian safety, bike safety, um, and then neighborhood character. These are all elements that were discussed today. So, um, I'm asking you, City of Minneapolis, uh, to help us come up with a solution that balances a new development and also replaces lost parking.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Lukey-Pier, did you have a question for the speaker?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, um, when you mentioned earlier that you were asserting that the 70-plus spaces wouldn't in fact be for other commercial uses in the area, but for something else, can you expand on that a little bit?
Sure, there's, uh, myself and other people in the audience today have great relationships with the commercial tenants, which I believe there's 23 of them in the Itasca Building, and not one has been approached by Solom companies in regards to contract parking for these 70 spaces. And again, this building, five of Itasca, that Kurt Gunsbury owns, he's in the, he's in the business of trading apartments, right? So he's got two commercial tenants that they're not being allowed to renew. In fact, they've expressed that they'll likely be out November of this year. And so it's becoming pretty clear that those 70 spaces are going to be meant for a future
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who hasn't spoken yet who would like to speak? Yes, please state your name and address.
Uh, my name is Peter Berdurney, I'm at, uh, 3055 22nd Avenue South. I'm hearing a lot of love here for the Acme Comedy Club, um, I think that's well deserved, I understand it. I'm also hearing a lot of issues with parking. Um, I do have a recommendation, there is lots of parking in the suburbs. Acme is free to relocate. I, however, don't think they would be as successful in the suburbs as they would be in the city. There's a certain ineffable benefit to being in a city, the vibrancy it creates, and sometimes that comes with trade-offs, like maybe it's a little harder to park your car. And those are the bet, those are the trade-offs that those of us that live in the city put up with to enjoy the city. Also, there's talk about character. I think, um, that's a loaded word, it means a lot of things to a lot of people, but I feel like we should all at least agree that parking lots don't contribute to character. People do, and to a much lesser extent, buildings do. If Acme will be destroyed by the loss of this parking lot, I have to wonder how stable this community is if something so comparatively small is able to rip it apart so quickly. So I think the, um, I support this building, I support more residents in the North Loop, and I think that these complaints about parking are, quite frankly, ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, one last speaker. Please state your name and address for the record.
Stacy Frank, 250 East Sixth Street in St. Paul. And I completely disagree with what he just said. So, I come at it from the perspective that when you walk into Acme Comedy Club and you descend those steps, you're descending into greatness. It's the smell of the building, it's the brick, it's the dark community feel that you get when you're sitting next to someone that you just want to laugh with, and it's just the atmosphere of the building itself. I mean, I know parking is a huge deal, but just the atmosphere when you walk in is something completely different. And if you were to change that, then I think some of that magic would be lost. Thanks.
Right, thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Kathleen O'Brien, 1115 Hampshire Avenue, North Golden Valley. Um, I just want to reiterate, uh, what everyone is saying, which I don't know if you guys understand. I started stand-up in New York City, and you would think that is, you know, the, the greatest place to do stand-up. And when I was doing stand-up there, people would always ask me, oh, you're from Minneapolis? That's where Acme is. It's widely regarded as the best club in the country. Bottom line, if we don't have that parking lot available, we're going to lose business. And to have to relocate, or to have to shut down, would be a real tragedy. And I just politely ask that you let us keep this magical place. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And we just have a minute or so left, so please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm John Thomas, 1015 23rd Avenue Southeast. I'm the outgoing External Relations Officer with the U of M Comedy Club. And, uh, we've talked about this amongst the club, um, in the last few weeks, and we're all big comedy nerds. And Acme is like the cornerstone of the comedy community in Minneapolis. And when you look at other cities' comedy communities, clubs have closed for a lot less, you know? This isn't a trivial, uh, action against the club. And it's taken decades for like Chicago's comedy scene to come back, um, and other comedy scenes across the nation. I think that all of the members of the U of M Comedy Club have had, uh, important and life, uh, flashpoint moments at Acme Comedy Club. I know me and my friend Kate, a few months ago, saw Greg Brent there, and he spent three hours after one of his shows talking to us about getting into comedy. I also think it's important to note that Acme is a place where a lot of voices are heard from every part of the community, um, including the LGBT community, um, the, and other minority groups. And I think that it's a real treasure to have a place where there's so little barrier of entry to have all of those voices heard. And I think that when people that are in college are able to go to a place and see those voices, that it affirms their aspirations. So, um, thank you.
Thank you. And it, uh, it is 6:25 now, so we, we did allow 45 minutes for testimony, so we're going to wrap up now. I think we were fortunate to have heard from so many of you. So at this time, I'll close the public hearing on this item. And commissioners, are there any further questions, or would anyone like to start us off with a motion? Commissioner Slack?
Well, actually, I'm going to start off with an apology. Uh, I, I unfortunately have to leave, uh, but I did want to just say a few comments about this project. Um, I, I actually have to go for work and testify in front of a committee in another city regarding a project, and so I'll be in the position that you were just in. Uh, I think the first thing, uh, I want to thank all of you for coming out. Uh, this was a really well orchestrated, uh, presentation. Uh, usually we get a lot of people coming up and are very emotional and animated about, uh, specific projects, and maybe not, are, are not always as informed, I think, as, as a lot of the individuals that were here today. So, uh, we appreciate that, and, and thank you for the testimony, because it does help make informed decisions for us as a planning commission. I was really looking forward to this project, because I lived in the North Loop for about 15 years, uh, I owned a condo right down the street, uh, I was on the first neighborhood board when the North Loop became a neighborhood. Uh, I started the Planning and Zoning Committee with David Frank. Uh, so I have a lot of, uh, long-term, uh, history with the neighborhood, and a lot of love for the neighborhood. Uh, it, it's interesting to hear this conversation now, because when we started this neighborhood, all we wanted was development, because we had nothing. We had Itasca, we had a couple other buildings that were starting to transform, and, and there were not people, there was nobody on the streets, we had plenty of parking, there was no cars. Uh, for a neighborhood to, to really transform in 15-plus years is, is pretty amazing. And we always knew that these times were going to come, we always knew that there were going to be issues with parking, and, and maybe that was one of the reasons that I actually had to move. With that, uh, there are other issues. We, we heard a lot early on, um, as a, as a young neighborhood about, uh, views to the downtown, we have no control over that. We heard a lot about development rights, uh, we don't have a lot of control over that. I think one of the things with this proposal here tonight is that, even if we don't grant the variances, uh, and they're actually pretty minor variances, this project could still move forward. It could still move forward, pretty much in the context that it, it looks like today. Uh, and we don't have a lot of control over that. So, that's what I wanted to say. Uh, I appreciate, again, your testimony, and, uh, I'm not leaving because of the testimony, but I, I'm leaving because of work. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gagnon?
I just want to clarify, how many of the parking spaces will be accessible to the public, and not just the, um, development and the retail?
One of the challenges with this site is, was unlocking the parking question. Everybody's talked about parking, thank you. The office building has long-term leases for the parking. And so the parking in the current lot right now is long-term lease for the 724 office building. We have absolutely no plans to convert that building into apartments. In fact, it wouldn't work, looking at the floor plate. So, the challenge with developing this site was to move the existing leases that are long-term parking leases, which we are parking on our 715 lot, it's long-term contract parking, our residents are filling the indoor parking with that. Then those long-term office tenant leases will move into this building. So we have 70 spots reserved for that. That being said, we've seen the parking question, the parking demand in the North Loop. We have a higher ratio of parking in this building per apartment than our other projects to exactly address that need, and that there might be additional parking. And we can't operate, as was brought up with the zoning ordinance, we can't operate a new hourly lot, but we could contract with other parkers, or do a valet service on the exterior lot that's nestled between the elevator building. So there are lots of options that, you know, perhaps could work in the future, that we'd work for, but at least 70 and probably more will be for the office building across the street.
Commissioner Lukey-Pier?
Yeah, I had a follow-up question to that. So if the long-term parking, or the 70 spots are designated for the office parking, what are the hours of the office? I mean, it seems to me as though there's two different, um, audiences that play here, one that it would primarily be a day occupancy, and one which would primarily be evening, weekend kind of occupancy. I mean, is there an opportunity for shared, um, resources, even though they'd have, obviously, contracts for those spaces, if they're only using it from, you know, 7:30 to 6:00 PM? It seems as though there's 70 spaces sitting empty, when this audience seems to think that it'd be most used.
And absolutely, I think there is a great opportunity for that. It depends on the office tenant. So right now, one of the tenants is, is Night Owl in the 724 building, and they do a lot of work at night. So sometimes the lot is full at night, um, for their particular business. So it's very odd, but most businesses would be during the day. We've specifically designed our building, and it's one of the reasons for the articulation on the northeastern side, where there's a separate mezzanine level of parking that has spots in the exterior lot. So those are very easily accessible for other contract uses in the neighborhood.
And have you been in communication with the owners of Acme to see about contracting those spaces?
Good question. And I, I wanted to say for the record that, that we view Acme Comedy Club as a city and a national treasure. We love Acme Comedy Club, and we want Acme Comedy Club to stay. You know, the whole North Loop and everybody is stronger if Acme stays. We did not, um, we heard some concerns with the parking at the previous HPC committee, but nobody had reached out to us from Acme Comedy Club until the petition. When we had the, the petition and it got picked up by the news, we reached out to Mr. Lee and met with Mr. Lee, and we want to do everything that we could to try to help Acme during construction. We floated ideas for valet parking in our 715 lot, because as you said, a lot of the office parkers are during the day, so will have some capacity at night. But we don't know what new office tenant might be, what the demand is, but we want to do, you know, everything from, you know, a sign to point where alternate parking is. We've met with the City Public Works and emailed Councilmember Frey about more metered parking. Many of the streets around there aren't even metered, so along the whole Star Tribune block, it's blocked off, non-accessible parking. So there are empty streets without parkers right now. So we've emailed and are working with the city to park on that. But I also want to stress that Acme Comedy Club, its landowner is Schaefer Richardson, and they own 160 of the parking spots. That is two-thirds of the lot that we are not developing. We are only developing one-third of the square block.
And how many, how many parking spaces is that one-third?
That one-third is 120 parking stalls.
All right, we, we can't, we can't take comments from the audience, uh, at this point. No, no, there's, the public hearing is now closed. Some commissioners had questions for the applicant.
So, of those 120 spaces, how many of those would be currently available for people to park at, to go to Acme? If you do know the answer to that?
It depends on the business, and it depends on the night. So there are cars that are there 24/7, and some nights, they're almost completely occupied by, um, one of our office tenants. And other nights, as has shown this past weekend, the lot is almost completely full. So it's really, we don't have an exact number, uh, because none of those spots, they're all contracted to the office building. None of them are designated for the Comedy Club or other comedy clubs, and it's right now, uh, opportune parking, if the spot's available, there's a pay box, it's the old system where you stick the envelope in. But if the spot's not available, you, there isn't any parking there, it's designated for the office building.
Thank you.
Commissioner Magrino?
Is that, so the Night Owl offices, is that Star Tribune, maybe?
No, it's a, it's a different business, that's the name of the business.
Okay, I was just asking, because if it was that, it'd probably be something that'd be there for a while.
Are there any further questions, commissioners? If not, we have five applications before us. Would someone like to start off the discussion with a motion? Commissioner Magrino?
I will start off with item A, and move to adopt staff findings and approve the application for the conditional use permit for height.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second, uh, on item A, to approve the conditional use permit for height. Is there anything you'd like to add, Commissioner Magrino?
Uh, I think Commissioner Slack summarized the whole issue pretty well. You know, in this case, as we discussed, it really is effectively a six-story building, but the elevator requirement is, it's kind of driving the, the additional height on that. So yeah, in favor of the motion.
Right, Commissioner Lukey-Pier?
I just wanted to, um, say that I'll be, um, voting in favor of this motion, just because by right, they could build this building. The only reason it has asked for a CUP for the height is for basically the elevator penthouse, which will not be visible by the street anyway, and has no impact on any of the concerns raised by any of the speakers today.
All right, is there any further discussion on item A, the conditional use permit for height? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Freeland?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Lukey-Pier?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
So that's 6-0.
And that motion carries. Next, we have item B, the conditional use permit for the surface parking lot. Someone like to make a motion? Commissioner Magrino?
I will move, uh, item B and adopt staff findings to approve the application for the surface parking lot in the downtown parking overlay district.
Motion is there a second? We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on item B? Commissioner Gagnon?
Sorry, I'm just still trying to remember. So, there's 160 spaces left. They're creating 222, and 70 of those are the, were the 70 included in that parking lot originally? So people didn't have access to those 70 before, anyway. At night? They did at night, and you're willing to work that out and continue to do that if the companies will work that out? Okay. All right, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Magrino?
Yeah, I would just also, um, state that generally, we, I think I would be pretty wary of supporting, uh, surface parking lot in the downtown parking overlay, but I think, given the specific situation where Bassett Creek goes under this, is a unique circumstance with the property.
And Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to sort of clarify here, again, this vote, um, you know, all of our policies in this area really are to redevelop surface parking lots into buildings. And so this requires special permission even to have a surface parking lot here, because it's in the downtown district, similar to the parking maximum vote variance that's coming up here. Um, so I think that this is supportable for the reasons that have been stated regarding the, the site conditions, and it sounds like the parking is desired, but I just wanted to clarify that this vote is to allow for surface parking, again, because of our regulations that discourage surface parking in downtown.
Right, is there any further discussion on the motion to approve item B? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Lukey-Pier?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Freeland?
Aye.
6-0.
Okay, and we have items C and D, the two variances, one for an interior side yard setback, the other for the maximum amount of parking. Uh, would someone like to make a motion on either or both of those? Commissioner Magrino, would you like to take a stab at that?
I will, uh, move items C and D and adopt staff findings for both of the variances, uh, the west interior side yard setback, and increasing the maximum amount of parking on the site.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Commissioner Lukey-Pier?
Yeah, I, I feel as though the variance has got brought up quite a bit, although I'm, um, a little bit in a conundrum, because it seems as though the concerns are about a larger issue, more than specifically the fact that they're asking for a five-foot variance on an interior side yard, or about the fact that they're, um, technically increasing parking beyond what they're allowed to legally do. And I just wanted to, um, reiterate what Commissioner Slack had said about, um, your testimony being incredibly important, and actually, um, probably my best evening of testimony, I think, in my years here on the planning commission, so thank you. I don't know about this, I'm munching M&amp;M's, but, um, I do want to say, though, that we are limited in our purview, purview as to what we can legally respond to when we deny, um, an application. If, we can't just deny it, um, because a different private entity wants to use a parking lot that they don't technically own. It, it puts us in a bad spot, it would result in is a lawsuit, and then it would be even messier. At the same time, we also can't delay it, as a couple of speakers requested, because, um, there's a clock ticking. Delaying of this actually would result in automatic default on the application, they get approved, um, without any, uh, they might get approved without any conditions being attached that may, or may not be forthcoming. So it actually is, uh, potentially worse scenario for, um, for all of you who are opposed to this. I would say we have to find certain findings, and unfortunately, given the limited scope of these particular two variances, the findings are not there to deny it, because it's privately owned and what they're requesting is reasonable, um, and practical difficulties do exist. So, um, as much as I am definitely, um, empathetic and certainly supportive of what everything you're saying, I'm hoping that the loss of part of a surface parking lot is not the death of such an outstanding comedy club. I mean, I hope it's larger than that, and, and I'm hoping that the, um, developers will actually work with you, uh, to retain some access. It would actually be incredibly short-sighted of them not to do it. I think, I think that's apparent. So, um, I just want to let you know that my support of these has nothing to do with my, um, antipathy toward the whole testimony. In fact, I'm, I'm quite heartfully in support of much of it, I just, legally speaking, our hands are a bit tied on this, and there's no findings to support denying it.
All right, the public hearing is... All right, the public hearing is closed once, once again. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Commissioner Magrino?
And I'll just sort of clarify, similar to my previous motion, that I think generally I would be hesitant to support increasing the maximum amount of parking on the site. But given that it's largely enclosed, except in the case where there is Bassett Creek Tunnel going under it, that's why I'm, I'm supporting it in this case. I think Ms. Lukey here did say that very well, that this is not about Acme Comedy Club specifically. It's about the land use application involving the lot across the street. You know, earlier today, commission voted for a drive-through that a lot of us probably wouldn't ordinarily support. We don't want a drive-through there, but the code says that the drive-through is allowed. And so if we deny that, we're potentially exposing the city to liability. And so we're just doing what is responsible for us to do, given the laws.
So, so the pub, the public hearing is, is now closed. Okay, okay, let's, let's, uh, let's not, not talk in the audience now. So we, we have a motion and a second on items C and D. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Vreeland?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Lukey here?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Six, zero.
And that motion carries. Lastly, we have item E, the site plan review. Commissioner Magrino?
Adopt staff findings and approve the application for site plan review for a new 124-unit residential building.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Lukey here.
Oh yeah, I'd like to add a sixth condition, that the applicant is to work with surrounding businesses just to, what, developing off our parking protocol, if at all possible, to allow for adjacent and neighboring businesses to utilize any unused spaces.
All right, we have, we have an amendment to the motion that adding a condition, a sixth condition, that the applicant work with surrounding businesses on identifying parking spaces. Any, in any case, an additional condition. We have a second, we can add that on a voice vote. All in favor, signify by singing aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries to amend that condition. Commissioner Bender, do you have something to add? Okay, so we have a, a motion to approve the site plan review with the addition of that sixth condition. And clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lukey here?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Vreeland?
Aye.
Six, zero.
Right, and that motion carries. And that concludes our discussion on item nine. Thank you to everyone who showed up to speak. Our next item business is item 10, the 38th Street Mixed Use Project. Staff is Ms. Holin, and we can let the room clear out for a moment and then move on to a presentation. All right.
Good evening, commissioners. The item before you is a series of land use applications for the development of a mixed-use project at the intersection of 38th Street and 28th Avenue South. The applications include rezoning of the property at 3820, or 3806 28th Avenue South, rezoning of the property at 3812 28th Avenue South, variance to the maximum floor area ratio in the C2 district, several yard variances, vacation of air rights over the alley, minor subdivision to adjust the lot line between 2702 East 38th Street and 3828th Avenue South, and site plan review. So for a little context here, the property is outlined in bold. You can see the center parcel, which is currently C2, that is 2707 East 38th Street. That currently contains an auto use, as shown here in the picture, with a large surface parking lot. The building at the corner at 3828th Avenue South is part of the application solely for the minor subdivision, which would adjust the lot line around that building, and the building would be retained. The property south of there at 2806 28th Avenue South is currently zoned C1, and the applicant is requesting C2 zoning. And then the parcel shown in yellow there currently has R1A zoning. That is 3812 28th Avenue South and currently contains a duplex that the applicant is proposing to rezone also to C2. So the duplex is shown here, a side-by-side duplex. And then there's an existing single-story commercial building at 3806 28th Avenue South. In terms of the rezoning, again, the applicant is requesting C2 zoning on all the parcels. In this case, you can see there's a combination of zoning districts. We have R1A, C1, and C2. Staff is recommending approval of the rezoning primarily based on policies for transit station areas that call for high-density development with pedestrian-oriented services and retail uses. The parcel is about two blocks east, or two blocks west, excuse me, of the LRT station at 38th Street and High Wathah Avenue. There's currently a mix of districts on the site, so some level of rezoning is required to allow for cohesive development project in this location as split zoning isn't allowed. The retail spaces are small scale, and the applicant is proposing to retain the pedestrian-oriented overlay district on the parcels where it's currently located and extend it one parcel south to the parcel at 3812 28th Avenue South. So with that in mind, it would retain the pedestrian-oriented character called for in a transit station area while allowing for the density that the policy is looking for with a mixed-use building. The applicant is proposing 53 dwelling units in this location and three ground-floor commercial uses. So the proposal was before you at Committee of the Whole a couple months ago. It's changed slightly since that time. You can see here, there are two ground-floor commercial spaces on the east side of the alley and one on the west side of the alley. The residential entrance space is 28th Street, 28th Avenue, excuse me, and there are walk-up residential units in that location. The applicant would build over the alley starting at a height of 16 and 1/2 feet. And that would start with the third floor of the building with units over the alley. And the fourth floor recessed back from 38th Street slightly. And looking here, there's surface parking behind the building that was evidenced here. That surface parking would have the building cantilevered over it for most of it with just the outer edges of the surface parking exposed. When it comes to the rezoning, again, there are policies that call for land use changes on 38th Street. So in the 38th Street Small Area Plan, this is in the Station District. That Station District identifies this site specifically as being an anchor site. Anchor development, mixed-use development between 38th Street and the transit station. There are policies that specifically call out land use changes depending on larger-scale redevelopment schemes. And more specifically, the plan states that redevelopment of single-family areas adjacent to or near 38th Street should be limited to areas where the plan envisions redevelopment facing 38th Street and states that adequate parcel depth should be acquired in order to avoid the need for variances from zoning standards that arise from small sites. So this is an area where redevelopment is called for, and I'll address that second piece of that in just a moment here. In terms of the variances, here's a view of the building. So the building is, as it was at Committee of the Whole, is still designed to read as three separate buildings essentially. So facing 38th Street, you have a brick building and a stucco building separated by the alley. And then as you round the corner, I don't know where that one went, you have a third building that's separated by that cupcake building. They are all connected, but it gives the appearance as a third building, separated with the existing building at the corner. This one having lap siding as the primary material and some metal panel. In your packets, you'll note, in the supplemental packets, I did put together another exhibit that hopefully will explain all of the variances a little bit more clearly. So that's what you're seeing here. So the variances have been identified with letters based on the way they're called out on the agenda. So let's see, the, starting with D is that small green section on the south side of the site, fronting on 28th. That is a front yard setback variance from 19 feet to 14 feet, just for that small section. Then you can see the orange line there. That's where the pedestrian-oriented overlay district kicks in, and they then have a maximum setback requirement of eight feet. So there are actually two variances required for that one frontage that staff is recommending approval of due to the conflicting regulations in that location. Practical difficulties clearly exist. F is that blue line around the existing building at 3828th Avenue South. Variances there are requested from 11 feet to zero. The variances are required because of the building at 38, or 3800, has residential uses on the second floor with windows facing those property lines. There is currently language that's introduced to address the situation. Staff is recommending approval of that variance as well. Again, practical difficulties exist. This is essentially a Z-shaped lot that has four interior side yards, which is a unique situation. They are providing 7.5 feet of separation on the south side and about seven feet of separation on the west side of that existing building. Staff does have some conditions of approval related to that under site plan review. And then, let's see, the light blue line on the bottom of your screen is a south interior side yard setback variance from five feet to four feet for parking. There's also a yellow line, which is a rear yard setback variance from five feet to one foot for parking. And then the pink line, a west interior side yard setback variance from 11 feet to zero. Those last three variances are the ones that staff is recommending denial of. Going back to that language in the Small Area Plan, the plan says adequate parcel depth should be acquired to avoid the need for variances from zoning standards that arise from small sites. And then, for example, related to yard landscaping and parking, not simply to increase the size of the project scale. In this situation, we're clearly looking at several requests for variances to increase the size of the building. There's surface parking here, the parking is not below grade. Again, this is a transit station area and a pedestrian-oriented overlay district. So while the parking is primarily covered by the building, what you're seeing here in white is open to the air. So that yellow line where there's a parking setback variance from five feet to one foot, that's directly adjacent to a single-family home. The outline of that single-family home comes about back to halfway through the second parking stall here. That house is only four feet off the property line, so there'd be five feet of separation between these seven surface parking stalls and that single-family home. They also have windows that would look directly out onto that parking. A fence is provided for screening, but there's no room for landscaping. Down here where the blue line is, this is a request from five feet to four feet for parking. Again, there's a single-family home that comes back to about this first stall, and then their rear yard is located where the rest of the parking stalls are. So while that is a slightly greater separation, it doesn't meet the minimum, and it doesn't allow for the seven-foot landscape yard called for in site plan review. Both of those things, again, specifically addressed in the Small Area Plan. Also, in looking at the findings, staff does not find that practical difficulties exist for those two variances. The minimum parking requirement here is 26 stalls. They're providing 44 parking spaces, so they're exceeding the maximum. Even if these two retail parking space, or retail spaces were to be combined and have a parking requirement in the future, they'd be looking at 29 for their minimum. This row of parking stalls here, these eight stalls, could be made into compact stalls without resulting in major adjustments to the site plan. And that would allow for the landscape yard to be provided in that location and meet the setback requirement. The south yard here, denying that variance would result in the elimination of those seven parking stalls. And then the last variance that staff is recommending denial of, it's actually a partial denial. It's in lieu thereof, the pink line there. So that's a west interior side yard setback variance from 11 feet to zero. Again, that variance is required because there's a mixed-use building next door with residential uses above. That building is only about four feet off the property line, so there would be four feet of separation between the proposed building and the existing. Staff is recommending denial of that and recommending that a five-foot setback be provided. That would get, first of all, it would allow for windows to be provided on that elevation, which would eliminate blank walls that are located there and then reinforce SEPTED principles for allowing for natural surveillance and visibility of adjacent spaces and would allow for greater separation between buildings. So setback variances are in place in part to maintain adequate access to light and air and adequate separation between uses. For these three variances specifically, staff was not able to make that finding. For purposes of time, I'll just get into the conditions of approval for site plan review. For site plan review, alternative compliance is needed for the number of materials, for the durability standards for materials. There are several instances of blank walls. The window requirements on the first floor facing the parking lot have not been met. And all of the required landscape yards within the parking area don't meet the minimum requirement. So staff has some conditions of approval related to mitigating the blank walls. One of those, as you can see here, this fourth floor here is setback from the building edge. So the building code would allow for windows in this location. Staff is recommending that windows be added to eliminate that blank wall, calling for a material change here. Again, because that is pretty visible as you're coming down 38th Street. There are some interior elevations where we're recommending approval of the alternative compliance for blank walls. We are recommending approval of the number of materials when it comes to alternative compliance, particularly because this development has been designed to read as three separate buildings. The metal panel is kind of an accent material on each building, but prevalent enough that we call it a primary material. So that's four instead of three. Getting to the backside of the building. So this is the backside of the residential units that fronts on 38th. There's a 30% window requirement there because that does face the onsite parking area. No windows are provided in that location. And again, on the south side of the retail spaces, this faces the surface parking area and no windows have been provided there. Those situations require alternative compliance for the minimum window requirement of 30% to have blank walls in excess of 25 feet and for the SEPTED principles, which call for opportunities to observe adjacent spaces and to provide opportunities for natural surveillance and visibility. So staff is recommending that the window requirements be met on those three sides. So here, here, and on the west elevation. And I guess the other one to note, there is a fourth exterior material. You can see this fiber cement panel that's introduced on the interior or rear-facing elevations in two locations. Staff is recommending that that panel be eliminated and replaced with a material that's provided elsewhere on the building. So I'll close there, and I can just respond to any questions you might have.
Okay, commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Magrino?
I'm just gonna make just a quick comment, but this is extremely helpful.
Okay, good.
Thank you for putting that together.
All right. Let's start, we have another. Thanks, Commissioner Kronzer.
Could you turn, turn to the elevation on 28th Street? Can you refresh your memory what we saw at Cowell? I don't recall the fourth floor being so much glass and so proud to the, to the street elevation. Maybe the applicant can add to that as well.
So what was before you at Commissioner? The goal? Looks like this. So there was some additional metal panel on that fourth floor and less glazing than what you're seeing now.
And it's also setback, was it not?
Yes, that is correct.
You know how far?
I don't think these are dimensioned, so... Do you recall how far it was setback at Cowell? We're estimating about three feet, maybe four.
A little more.
Yeah, it's this. This is the area of the setback here.
Okay, if there are no further questions of staff, I'll open the public hearing on this item. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first. And if you, if you don't mind, focus your presentation on, on the variance, variances where staff is recommending denial and any other kind of outstanding issues. So please come into the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, thank you for hearing us. I'm speaking on behalf of the project. We are the architect for the project. I just wanted to walk through just a couple of things for those of you that may have not been at the Committee of the Whole, talk very quickly about our approach to the project and then touch on some of the denials and conditions that were mentioned. To begin, the goals of our project were really to align as well as possible with the station area plan and the density requirements that were called out as well as taking into consideration pedestrian experience and the pedestrian overlay.